Good evening. Welcome to the February 3 meeting. Let's start by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance. Let's start off tonight with a moment of silence. In a very sad moment in town last week, when a second grader, Nyannette Appleton, passed away after a long-term trip with health issues. So if you could please join the town in remembering her and holding her family and her friends with us. Thank you. So time to go ahead and approve the minutes. We have a motion to approve, I'm too loud for you. Yeah, approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
On second?
Second.
For the January 6 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh passes. For the January 21 meeting, may I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh passes. We have two presentations this evening. The first one, one of our attorneys, Andy Berg, will be giving us on the building moratorium. He will give the town an update on what's going on.
Thank you, Jill. I have microphones, my voice will, of course, bear with me. As some of you or all of you may be aware, the town passed a moratorium on the issuance of all building permits for 60 days. And that was a response to an issue the town is having with certainly a noted correcting houses containing four or five, five or more bedrooms and renting to multiple people. I guess, as we all know, mostly college housing. So the town council passed a building moratorium to stop to all new construction. It's just, instead of differentiating between different types of properties, it was just a blanket moratorium. Last Thursday, myself and Mr. Davis were notified that a lawsuit had been filed and they were seeking an emergency injunction called a temporary restraining order from the Superior Court in Kent County, because their court that was sent out, because the judge here is too busy. So what happens there is the judge reviewed the pleadings and made a very early determination of whether there might be a cause of action. And if there's any doubt, generally what they'll do is they'll issue a restraining order which puts everything on hold or will stop the enforcement of the moratorium. But the judge takes a little bit more time to sort things out. So obviously, the town's concern was if the judge issued a blanket restraining order on the enforcement of the building moratorium, it would allow a window of opportunity for the developers that were concerned about to get their permits issued and proceed with their plans, much to the chagrin of some of the neighbors, and also present a serious fire hazard by overloading certain houses. So in the next, last Friday, myself and another assistant town solicitor who has zoning issues, Steve Marcello, we went to the Superior Court. We conferenced this case with opposing counsel and with the judge, and we decided that we would agree to a, what's called a consent order, which is an order from the court, basically limiting the enforcement of the building moratorium. So we made two exceptions. By consent, the court ordered that any building permit seeking new construction or remodeling of four bedrooms or less would be exempt from the moratorium, which took the class out that we were mostly concerned about, five bedrooms plus. The other condition, because one of the litigants, it would affect him, would be that the moratorium would not be applied to any structures in R-40 or R-80 zoning. There were some large houses, single-family houses, that was not a threat for student housing that were in these areas. So they wouldn't have qualified for the four bedrooms or less exemption. So we did a limited exemption there, R-40s and R-80s. This addressed the issues that were before the order at the time. The judge was satisfied. We're not going to issue a restraining order, a blanket restraining order. Both sides agreed. We anticipate there might be some more litigation coming up, but for now, the moratorium is in effect. With those limitations and it's addressed their concerns, the litigants, it's also has not undermined the town's goals in passing the building moratorium.
Do any council members have questions for Andy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next is a presentation on shoreline mapping LiDAR survey. We have some of the University of Rhode Island Oceanography graduate students here. They come on, present.
My name is John King and this is Brian Cattrelli, who are both at the Graduate School of Oceanography. I guess it's interesting. Am I supposed to be facing this way or this way?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to talk about the results of the survey that we've been doing for the last year of the town beach. I'm going to start off by sort of describing why we're doing it and the background on this sort of monitoring. We've been doing this monitoring since the early 1960s at the Graduate School of Oceanography, mostly on the South Coast. We use this vessel to do this new type of survey. Usually, we use survey from land using a traditional survey technique. Yeah, so we've been doing this since the early 60s and there's kind of elements of this. We're trying to understand and quantify seasonal changes along the beach. Most of you have probably noticed that there is an annual beach cycle during the big storms in the fall and the winter. A lot of sand gets eroded to the beach and it gets stored in bars offshore. And then just through the normal wind action, when the storms are gone, you just have normal tides and waves, a lot of the sand in the bars comes back onto the beach. So you tend to get a larger, lighter beach during the summer. And sort of monitoring this over time helps to inform management decisions about sand replenishment, whether to do it or not, and what sort of volumes you're going to need. So this beach survey that we've been doing, you can see our sites, they're all on the South Coast of Rhode Island, and these tend to have more dramatic changes in beach volume. Naragansett Beach, because it's around the corner, you have major changes in volume, but you're a little sheltered from the big storms, except if they come from the southeast direction. All right. So we basically have been doing this since the 60s using pretty old technology. We're just using transits. We upgraded in the 90s to a laser transit, but this is kind of what I would describe as 19th century technology. You have a transit and you have somebody holding a pole that you're taking measurements on, and you produce a profile that is a cross section of the beach and you can determine the volume of the sand on the beach with this technique. And if you kind of look at some of the longer records, you can see Green Hill Beach, there's a long-term trend of major retreat of the beach. It's been losing volume over the entire time of the time series. So the time series goes from 63 up to the present, and it's a steady retreat of the beach. Some other beaches like East Beach, no replenishment or anything going on there, but it tends to be holding its volume. And part of the difference there is where it's located on the coastline. Green Hill Beach is near a headland. Headland's a road more quickly than Barrier Beaches, which is what East Beach is. Unfortunately, Naragansett Beach is warm like a headland beach than a barrier beach. So we don't have a time series to show what the trend is. That's part of the reason that we're doing this. The other reason that we're doing this is if you look at real data, which is from the Newport tide gauge, which goes back to 1930, so you've got roughly 90 years of data. Over the last 90 years, it's been roughly a foot rise in sea level, it's well documented. But the really scary thing to look at is we're predicting using various models. These models, if we have high concentrations of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere and a lot of global warming, you get higher rates of sea level rise. So if you look at predictions that Noah's making at this same tide gauge in Newport, for Rhode Island by 2050, they're predicting between three and four feet of sea level rise in the high-end scenarios. The reason that I'm pointing to that rather than the low-end scenarios is this data has been tracking the high-end scenarios over the last 20 years. So we're thinking right now that this curve is more likely than the beach. So I don't think anybody thinks that this is what's going to happen. That's more, I think this trend is down here somewhere. So, you know, we're looking at four feet by 2050 and they're predicting about 11 feet by 2100. So what we're trying to do is advise you on what you should do to maintain your beach as a nice white beach where it is for maybe the next couple of decades. Because the bottom line is, if this scenario happens, your beach is going to move. It's not going to be where it is anymore. You're going to have to be thinking about, okay, how do we acquire the real estate on the other side of 1A, frankly? But that's a discussion for another day. And what we're trying to do with this survey is just accurately track, okay, what are we going to get moving forward? It's not likely that we did. Is it likely to be? And give you some decades to react to that, because obviously, you need a town beach and a town in Naragansett. Okay, so I'm going to hand off to Brian now. He's going to tell you how we do what we do now, and we have brought it into the present century in terms of technology.
All right, thank you, John. So I just want to circle back a little bit to traditional beach profiles, the method that John has outlined. And I want to talk about some of the limitations and drawbacks. So a traditional beach survey, as John describes, is just a two-dimensional transect in elevation. If those profiles are spread across the beach, you're not really gaining any information between the other profiles. So although the data is very accurate, very repeatable at that one location, you're not really understanding changes along the entire beach. And so what we're doing is we're bringing beach monitoring into the 21st century. John said that, you know, the methods that we've been using since the 1960s are really kind of old-fashioned. So some of the animations and figures I'm going to show in this are representing our first year of survey at Naragansett Town Beach, and we're going to show some of the results of our, using this LiDAR technology. And I'll explain what LiDAR is. And if we can get this animation going. So as we fly through this animation, this is data that we collected at Clayhead Bluffs in Block Island. And the reason I'm showing this, the data is pretty spectacular. The bluffs are really iconic. You see them when you're passing on the ferry toward New Shore. And what's immediately apparent is we're no longer dealing with two-dimensional elevation transects. We're actually getting data along the entire coastline seamlessly, and there's no gaps anymore. So using this LiDAR technology, we're no longer limited to just two-dimensional elevation transects. So now we can make better informed decisions about how the beach is responding to storms and future climate change if we use this in a monitoring type method. Okay, so I used a word that you guys might not be that familiar with, LiDAR, stands for light detection and ranging. It's, the best way I like to describe it in a layman's term is, imagine standing on a beach at nighttime, you can't really see your surroundings, but you have a flashlight. You turn your flashlight on and all of a sudden, you're gaining information about your surroundings. LiDAR is kind of similar in that it's a light-based technology, and we use it as a mapping technology. So imagine just flicking this switch on the system, all of a sudden, you're gaining all this data. So we're able to produce a three-dimensional model like we saw in that fly-through animation. And that data is actually usable. It's real elevation data all along the beach, and you're no longer stuck with just two-dimensional transects. You have continuous coverage across the entire beach. And LiDAR can be implemented in several different ways. It can be mounted simply on a tripod, much like a camera, pointed in the direction that you want data acquired, and basically would take a snapshot. But more useful in beach monitoring would be mounted on a boat like we do. So in this image right here is the Shannon Rose, which is one of our survey boats. You can see the LiDAR system is mounted high on the boat, and it's looking perpendicular to the direction that the boat moves, so out 90 degrees. And so what we do is we advance the boat along the coastline, so we pull up to Naragansett Town Beach. We move into about 10 feet of water when it's safe to do so, and we turn on our system and continuously record data. So basically, the system is emitting light and is reflecting back to the system, and a record of elevations is being recorded. We integrate this with really high-precision GPS, the vessel orientation, and when we mash all this data together, that's how we produce these 3D models. So how do we go from these three-dimensional pretty pictures to something that's actually usable for beach management decisions? Well, first, we take your data, which is a series of points, each point in this image. So the left-hand part of the screen is Naragansett Town Beach in LiDAR view, so to speak. You can see different features such as buildings, the seawall in the left corner, you can even see the parking lot, dude fencing, et cetera. The LiDAR system doesn't discriminate what it's getting points reflected from. It's going to reflect off anything that's in the field of view. However, when we're trying to monitor beaches or elevation change, we don't really care about, you know, people standing on the beach or buildings or structures. So what I do is I take all of the raw data and filter out one of the points that aren't useful. So we're only interested in elevation that represents, you know, the actual beach. And so that little flow chart on the left, on the right-hand side, is showing how we go from just, you know, the raw data all the way to a processed model of the beach. We call this a digital elevation model. And so here are some results from our year-one surveys. So how we set up and structured our surveys is that we go out and do a survey in March, which would coincide with like kind of a low volume, a low beach volume, because it's at the end of that winter season where a lot of the sand has swerved away and hasn't had time to come back onto the shore through natural processes. And then we also do a second survey at the end of the summer seasons, when quieter conditions, lower wave energy allows some of that sand to come back on the beach. And by kind of keeping track, doing these two surveys, we're able to really capture changes in seasonality of the beach, or how much volume the beach regains over the summer season. And that's kind of where we're at. We just finished our first year of surveys, so that's, we can really only track the seasonal change from March to September. What we hope to do and what we recommend is continuing this beach monitoring program into the future so that we can establish, just re-establish baseline data, get the elevation data, and understand, is Naragansett more like Green Hill? Is it losing data? Is it losing elevation in a continuous way? Or is it more like East Beach? Does it fluctuate more irregularly? So that implementing this in a long-term monitoring program is kind of the way to go if you want to make science-informed decisions about how to manage our beaches. So real quick, the left panel is just a raw digital elevation model from March, and then on the right-hand side is a comparison of our digital elevation models from the two surveys. And so what you're seeing is obviously a colored map. The green colors indicate where the beach gained volume. So that's from March to September, we had gains of beach volume in the lower part of the beach. And actually, this trend is dominated by rising elevation or gaining beach. But this is what to be expected with the seasonal beach cycle. What we're really interested in doing is kind of tracking this through time, year to year, to see if Naragansett's a type of beach that loses sediment continuously, or is it a beach that just more naturally fluctuates year to year? And just one quick slide, this data that we're producing right now, Naragansett really hasn't had a way of monitoring the beaches. They haven't, we haven't been tracking beach changes or elevation changes. And there have been some historical data sets that our LiDAR system is very comparable with, which is useful, because any data that we're able to get our hands on, since our data is in real space and is real elevation, we can compare it easily with any historical data that we can get our hands on, or any future data sets as well. And with that, I think that's all we have for it.
Thank you. Any member of the council have any questions for that?
Yeah, I have a question. In 20, in year 21, you said-
2021.
2021, yeah, 21. Are we going to have, would you say it seems to be 11 feet higher? Is that what you're saying?
That's what Noah's saying.
No.
No. And that's a, that's a model that they posted about a year ago. And what I would say is if you trace the history of these sea level rise curves, and it's all about, as we learn more about the big ice sheets like Greenland that was in Antarctica, they're melting faster than we originally thought. And all of those back in the ocean increases sea level rise.
So yeah, the last hundred years, we lost how much? A foot?
It's only a foot over the last-
A foot.
Yeah.
Hundred years, ocean rolls a foot.
Yeah.
In 80 years, it's going to go 11 feet. Don't I tell me?
That's what I'm telling you.
All right. Now you guys are doing all these computations for the next, say, five years.
Yeah.
So in year five-
Yeah.
-we're going to lose by, because the water's going to rise seven inches a year?
Uh, three and a half feet. It accelerates moving forward, so you're not going to, if you look at the graph, you know, it's 2020 now. Basically, what I would recommend is you want to monitor every year or every couple of years until, say, 2030, 2035, and see where you end up on this range of curves.
So do you do, right, you get the rocks, okay? So what happens in five years when it's only rose three? Then you pull those projections backwards?
Yes. Yeah. Basically, these predictions have been made, but they're, they're model predictions, but they've been making these predictions since the 1990s. And what we see-
When I was 10, I remember being petrified as a kid.
Yeah.
Because they said that in 10 years in, what did they say? By 2000, we're supposed to add ten inches of ice everywhere in the North Beach. We're going to have a new ice age.
Yeah, I don't know who said that, but-
Yeah, well, it seems like every 10 years, they come up with a new disaster. Okay, I'm just making sure you guys make sure you keep an eye on these things so I don't get caught without my water wings or whatever.
Well, yeah, and what's, what's going to be important is, is since the 1990s, we're now at 2020, it's been tracking the top curve, not the bottom curve, that they actually did.
From 1990 to today, it's been going on?
Uh, it's accelerated. So, I mean, like, if you go back to 90 years, it's a foot total.
Yeah.
But the rate of increase is increasing. So it used to only go up maybe a seven meter and a half, like less than an inch, a year. Now it's up to about three points something. So it's kind of doubled in the last couple hundred years. And what they're predicting is it's going to, that's an exponential curve. This one is a linear curve. We fit that to linear. What they're, what they're saying is it's not going to be linear anymore, it's going to be exponential. It's going to go off much faster. And I think if you're not keeping on top of this, you're going to get caught with your beach on top of 1A instead of where you want. That's, that's what happens when sea level rise increases. You're not going to not have a beach, it's just not going to be where you want.
Well, you've got parking lots now.
Yes, exactly. Your beach is going to, you've seen this a few times already, where your beach ends up in the parking lot, you've got to scoot it up to put it back on the beach. You're going to be able to keep doing that for a while, but not forever.
Thank you.
So just one note. This study was brought forward to the direct advisory board and to Steve Wright, Parks and Recreation. And one of the reasons that we brought it forward was because, again, we didn't have a baseline. And what we were looking for is a baseline. Yes, people can make predictions, and there can be predictions of the year 2000 to 2030, but having a baseline information from these people, the URI, to be able to tell us, well, here's what we did in the year 2019, and then if they revisit every couple of years, often Steve puts in for it to be revisited, we will have actual baseline and the actual information in front of us. So that maybe in 2030, it may not be 11 feet. If it's six feet, five inches, then we're in bonus round, and it shows that all predictions were off a little bit. The world is a big world, so to predict where the water's going to be and what height it's going to be in every location, I would think somebody would be really good at being able to do that. But this is all about a baseline, and I think they're doing a wonderful job with it. And I think we need to continue with it so we will know exactly where we stand with our beach that's our most valuable asset.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone in the council have an agenda item they'd like to pull? Seeing none, someone make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Positive note, that's all I have.
Sure. Mr. Wilt Housby.
Just wanted to speak on the police car repair. I was so happy that we're moving in a direction of three bids. I've been advocate of getting three bids on it. Everything we do is possible, and we've done that, and I want to congratulate the staff and the manager for doing that. I've noticed it, and I hope it continues. We can contribute as well to make additional bids. Also, on the, on the, on the item, it had courtesy. Can I have a question? What really, Tom manager, I think, I think you put this on, "Life is short, but there is always time for courtesy," was on the, was on the agenda. I was so happy to see a positive, a positive thing going on. And it's like the Tom manager is moving it all down the line to all the staff, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stanley. That's actually Jim's tagline and his signature on his email also. Thanks for moving on to new business. The first motion is a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations in the town of Naragansett in accordance with the Naragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking on El Don Quin Road. This comes from the police department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Next is a motion to approve and request the Surfers Healing RI to conduct a one-day free surf camp for children with autism at the town beach on September 19, 2020, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, subject to state and local regulations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, four, zero passes. The next is a motion to approve and authorize the Naragansett Park and Recreation Department to partner with Narrow River Preservation Society, Association, and Narrow River Land Trust in offering five educational programs at Middlebridge property, subject to state and local regulations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, for Benjor. Anybody on discussion, anyone? This is a great event that's put on every year, Jesse and I sit on the land trust. It's something that the town really benefits from, from having both these organizations using the river. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero passes. The next is a motion to amend the gazebo fee schedule as per the attached approved transfer of responsibilities of the rental of the gazebo from the town's office to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, sorry. I have a few things to ask.
Sure, go ahead.
Actually, Steve, do you mind coming up? Hi.
Good evening.
Um, so where did we come up with the 150? Or how was that formula calculated?
Well, the, the fee was produced from my office and the Towers Office from, from projections on what the rate is for two hours for that, for that gazebo for weddings. And again, it's not, it's just for the ceremony only, it's not for a reception. And so that rate, that existing rate has been there, predates the Parks Department and the Towers Office, so it's been there for over, at least it does have more in 15 years. So that's, that's the rate that was chosen by the Towers, again, the Towers Office and the Parks Office, we think is suitable for the staying in age for 2020, for a two-hour rental rate.
Yeah, okay. And do we have any events already scheduled there for 2020? Or, you know, yeah, any two-hour events?
Well, at any of our rates, if anyone's already reserved rates, that the $25 rate would hold true, any new reservations would be the new rates.
Okay, so if someone called this week to book it, it would be at the 150?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, I see Catherine Silver, don't please.
Catherine Silver, 48 years old. Of course, I'm in favor of rising the fee. But I'd like to see town residents get a little bit of reduced fee and out of town pay double, just as they do for the beach or beach pavilion there. So maybe if the town residents could be 100, maybe out of town 200. Thought that would be better to give some relief to town residents in that gazebo.
Thank you, Catherine, good suggestion. So all in favor?
Uh, so do we want to amend that? I mean, I actually think that's a great idea.
Everything else is a two-tier. We can wait to appoint Parks and Recreation Board as a budget and talk about that at that point in time.
We can change it then?
Yeah, we can change it then, we can change it now. I'm a woman in favor of it. All the other properties we have, we have two-tier, either you're a resident or non-resident. So I just don't know right now how much we'd wanna charge, is the only thing. We should have some time to think about it. Maybe have the input from the Parks and Recreation Department, this is gonna be going under.
Maybe put, let the Rec Advisory Board just maybe review it and come back with a. I mean, Steve, does this have to be in right away? Because I know you're on a timeframe with scheduling and putting things out in flyers and stuff like that. Hurry up before that gazebo is just infiltrated with salt water. I think the responsibility end, I think the Towers Office would like to have the responsibility back. I think the logistics for responsibility would be good tonight. The fee, it's not a big deal to us, it's really not about the fee. So the tier fee, we can definitely take a look at it and come back to you on the fee. Basically, we're gonna put the responsibility into Parks and Recs and take it away from the Towers because they want. It was at their request, it was at their request to do that, so I have no problem. You can come back with a suggested tier rate. It's not a lot of money, so it's why.
So Terry, should we just make a motion to continue this and ask Parks and Rec to come back, is that the proper?
I think they wanna get a handle on it now.
The motion is to adopt the fee schedule and approve the transfer of responsibilities, so you could amend the motion.
Okay, would someone like to amend the motion?
I move we amend it for $100 for residents, $150 for non-residents. That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I was gonna amend it to just transfer the responsibility.
I agree, Jesse, and then we'll have the Parks Department tell us what they would like to do.
Right.
So I'll make that motion to amend it.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
And the amended motion is to have the Parks and Rec Department amend the fee schedule and where allowing the responsibilities to be transferred to the gazebo, to the Towers, to the Parks and Rec Department. Okay, the next motion is a motion to approve the sponsorship agreement with Navient Credit Union for the 2020 Summer Concert Series at Gazebo Park. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion from the audience? Thank you to Navient Credit Union for your generosity. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero passes. The next is a motion to approve the title sponsorship contract with Moches Sotheby's International Realty for 2020 Summer Concert Series on the beach. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? From the audience? Thank you to Moches Sotheby's. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. The next is a motion to award the bid for personalized beach towels, baseball hats, and beach division to the lowest bidder, SP Design and Manufacturing, in the amount of $14,070. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. The next is from engineering. It's a motion to approve the filling of one vacancy process-controlled creek treatment coordinator within the wastewater division due to resignation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes four zero. The next is from town manager. A motion to approve the contract extension for general heating, ventilation, and air conditioning services with JMB Mechanical for a one-year period at their hourly rate of regular and urgent services and their percentage markups for parts, materials, and equipment under the same terms and conditions as the original contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion from the audience, Mr. Wiltshire.
I'm so happy to see, it says, it said here, "No change in bid prices", so that means they're pretty well keeping the prices the same for next year as they did last year. And that's pretty fantastic. And if you remember, I think Sherman did that a few meetings ago. I think what we're seeing here is that there's no, nobody must be getting raises or something. Prices aren't going up. These contractors must not be paying people more money. We're probably not as well off as we all think. So, no increases. I think we gotta transfer that to a tax mentality, no increases. If that's what our people are doing out there, that's what the economy's doing out there, we just can't follow my humble, my humble idea. There's always cost of living, we can go up the cost of living, it's a fair thing to do. But now I'm getting data back here showing that cost of living is not happening. That maybe in some way it's a government, a government calculation on some, somewhere that's probably not valid. What we're experiencing is no increases out there. And that's what I hope you'll consider as you consider your tax increases during the budget time. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. The next motion is from Jesse, is a motion to. Uh, we did, you just came before a comment, correct, I think?
No, it's still there.
Oh, stop, thank you, Jesse. Is there?
It's a motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. The next is a motion from Jesse, it's a motion to approve the resolution that the town in Narragansett declares February 1st to February 8th, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Survivor's Week. Jesse?
Thanks. Yep, so February 1st to February 8th is National Gun Violence Survivor Week. And this resolution is specific to the town. It also recognizes and declares this week in Narragansett and to honor and remember the victims and survivors of gun violence and uplift the resilient voices of survivors across the nation. So there are certain purposes that this week serves. One is to put a human face to America's gun crisis. Another is to raise awareness and educate Americans on all forms of gun violence. And then the third is to enable individuals to recognize their direct personal connection to gun violence. So even though we don't necessarily have a gun violence problem in Narragansett, many of us personally know people that were directly affected by violence through guns. And the purpose of this is to really raise awareness and to acknowledge and support survivors of gun violence. So even though it's a national week, if you think about it, how many people in this room were aware of this week? So the reason for this resolution, so there are a few people, but the reason for the resolution, the reason to do it at the town level is to raise awareness at the town level. Because when it's marked nationally, and maybe it doesn't get publicity or the other, you know, weeks do, we can do our part at the town and the city level to spread the word of the resolution and of the week. So that's why it's on the agenda. Thank you.
So discussion, the council?
Yeah, I can support this resolution, but I did like someone struck out. At the top of the page, you can go to the third, whereas, down. It says, whereas, form of gun violence can include, without limit to it, gun suicides, gun homicides, domestic violence involving guns, shooting by law enforcement. I would like to strike that and amend this resolution not to say shooting by law enforcement.
So, you know, this was, it's based off of a draft. I did make some edits to it before I put it on. I don't think the intent of this is to necessarily put blame on any parties. It's really just to kind of think about anyone dying or getting shot or surviving. It's not about putting blame anywhere. However, if that's, if that wording is what keep you from voting on it, I'm fine with that.
And the rest of that sentence is in unintentional shootings. Move to strike, shooting by law enforcement, paragraph.
Uh, second.
What's with Rick Astley first?
So again, this is a resolution, a national resolution. I just don't feel the town should be in these resolutions as up there nationally. So let's dig into this a little bit. This is a politically rooted coalition special interest group. If you start looking into it, it identifies as a gun control advocacy group. It's founded and funded by now presidential candidate Michael Bloomberg. It's a 501(c)(4). It's got above five million in assets. I don't think towns need to get into what's going on nationally. I think people know what's going on. I think that we need to focus more on what our town is about. I'm more interested in what Stanley said. How am I gonna keep the taxes low? How am I gonna get the roads done? How am I gonna maintain our buildings? I'm not interested in these national people that are coming forward with, you know, whether it's a coalition or a resolution. Not interested in that. I'm interested in what goes on in our town and our community. I realize what's out there. We know guns is a big thing in this country. There's no question about it. You have a lot of different groups that are either in support or against guns. So I'm definitely not supporting this.
Anyone in the audience want to speak? Ms. Shallow?
Karen Jepshello with 65 Wonder Street. I absolutely support this in every way, shape, or form. I have an eight-year-old granddaughter that when she was three went into a police station with her father because he had a fingerprinted for a counseling license. And the man in front of her was getting a gun. And she goes, guns, we don't like guns. Guns are nothing, nothing. Guns, only policemen should have guns. And I pretty much agree with her. And when we lived in Pennsylvania, her 13-year-old, my son's class, committed suicide, and his father was a high school teacher that was well-loved with his father's hunting rifle, which was displayed in their living room in a case. And I totally think it comes from educating children about the danger of guns and about the implications of guns. And it's, it's a microcosm what's happened in small towns and what's happening at the national level. And I don't think you can separate the two at all. And I don't think it's political. For me, it's personal. And it's, you just can't even imagine what it's like to lose anybody from gun violence. And I totally disagree with you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
I totally support you, Jesse.
Anyone else want to speak? Melissa Juden?
Thank you, Jesse, for introducing this resolution. I do have to disagree with you on one point, though. You said that Narragansett doesn't necessarily have a gun violence problem. I think that we do. I'm gonna read to you something. Chad Thomas O'Brien. Chad Thomas O'Brien, 18, of Star Drive, Narragansett, passed away Friday, November 17th, 2006, at Rhode Island Hospital in Providence. He was born in Providence, the beloved son of Patrick O'Brien of South Kingstown and Rhonda Vesbia Gershov of Narragansett. He is also survived by his stepfather, Thomas Gershov Koff of Narragansett, and his stepmother, Michelle O'Brien of South Kingstown. Chad was a 2006 Narragansett high school graduate and was attending the University of Rhode Island. He was an honor student and an outstanding athlete. In high school, he lettered in four varsity sports, basketball, football, track and field, and cross-country. Chad was an avid surfer and enjoyed snowboarding and playing sports, where he had won numerous awards and accolades as a scholar-athlete. He enjoyed music and the special bonding with his closest buddies. Chad was very special to his family and friends, and he'll be sadly missed. I could go on, but I think you get the point. This is a terrible story of gun violence. Chad died by suicide, if you don't know this story. It's tragic. And this is not about gun control, or gun safety even. This is just about honoring people who have lost a family member or been a victim of gun violence themselves. It's not a political agenda. This is a very personal agenda to many people in Narragansett. It's a tragedy for many, and I hope that you will honor them by recognizing this locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elroto.
Catherine Selleberg, 48 years old. I also, this is not about gun control, for or against gun control, and I really disagree with Richard about this. This is, this is just a well-intentioned resolution. And I don't know why we're picking it to death. It seems absurd to me. And it's also denial to say that we do not have a gun control problem in this town. As said, that young man committed suicide with his grandfather's gun. The husband of a Narragansett high school teacher committed suicide with a gun. There are people in this town who have weapons they shouldn't have. I had an elderly neighbor, he had a rifle in his garage, hanging in his garage, and he had other guns in his house. I really think, besides this, we should try to make an effort to get any guns that are in this town not being utilized properly or just... People have guns, you know, they take them back from when they were in service, um, and they come upon them, they just happen to buy them, they buy them. I used to have clients that bought used by rifles that came out and they sold them. These guns are still out there. There's 393 million legally obtained guns in this country, and there's only 362 million people. And I think that if you delve. And I think that if you delve into this even more, that you'll find that a lot of the gun violence is committed by guns that are stolen from people's homes. But anyway, I'll get off the track. This is a well-intentioned resolution. I think we should just pass it and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
My name is Margaret Swanson. I live in Narragansett. I'm a lead for Moms Demand Action. I've voted for six years. I'm a volunteer. We are not a political group. We do have NRA members in our group. We have veterans in our group. We are 6 million people. And I, right now, am a lead for the Red Flag Law, which is Gun Suicide by Gun. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but South County has the largest number of suicides by gun in the state. So it is, we are 10 times more likely in the United States to be a victim of gun crime, or gun violence, I'm sorry. It's not limited to Providence. We have gun suicides, we have gun homicides, domestic violence involving a gun, intentional shooting, children find a gun and shoot themselves with it. We are 58% of American adults responding that they or someone they care about has been impacted by gun violence. I'm a victim of gun violence. There are 22,000 Americans that die each and every year of firearm suicide. It's crazy to think otherwise. A gun in the house with someone who is suffering from a form of mental illness, depression, or, like Chad, with a girlfriend, you know? I was the silent survivor lead for three years. I know these people. They're just like you and me. The burden of gun homicides fall heavily on the communities already facing structural disadvantages. We know that. But our rates are just as high as Providence. Theirs is a little, is a different types of gun violence than ours. Every year, 100,000 Americans survive a gunshot wound and are faced with lifelong process of physical and emotional healing, as long as, as well as financial. Gun violence in children, firearms are the second leading cause of gun deaths to children. Black children, it's the first. Every year, 3,000 children and teens are shot and killed, and approximately 15,600 are shot and injured. Domestic violence, we know that mass shooters, most of them are domestic violence, have prime domestic violence against them. And there are 4.5 million American women today, alive today, who have been threatened by a, by an intimate partner. Hate crimes with guns, we don't really need to worry about that so much down in Narragansett. But there's more than 28 hate crimes with guns a day. What really bothers me is the children. Instances like Marjory Stonely Douglas High School in Florida. After that shooting, we have one little girl that went to school there. It created new anxieties for younger generations of students. In a recent national poll, 75% of high school students aged 15 to 17 cited mass shootings as a primary source of stress. More than 1 in 5 reported that the possibility of a shooting at a school is a source of stress on a day-to-day basis. I think we're doing our children a big disservice by brushing them under the rug, and they need to know that they're safe, and that we realize that we are the adults and we're going to keep them safe. And because we're in Narragansett, and it's not, it is a national deal, we are, we have been asked to go from town to town. Town politics are important. Go from town to town, talk about gun violence. Then we can do state to state, and then we do federal. To think that because we're in Narragansett, it doesn't affect us is ridiculous. And again, we have NRA members, we have veterans. My husband shoots guns. His number one concern is gun violence in the country. So it affects all of us, and I hope that you will take the week and honor those victims of gun violence, because most of you do know someone who's been affected by gun violence. I think if you take a poll, probably 75% of us know someone, whether it's suicide, or murder, or whatever it may be. But thank you for the time. And Jesse, thank you very much for the...
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Ms. Amoruso?
Susan Amoruso, West Bay Drive. I didn't plan on saying anything, but I was really shocked by thinking that we should just worry about taxes, and we don't have anything to worry about in Narragansett. I don't think that the people in Westerly really thought they had anything to worry about, there it was in Westerly. I don't think that, I heard about two shootings today. It's just, it doesn't, it just, every single, the people in the Greyhound bus room, were they thinking about it? And if this isn't something to be concerned about, as Mr. Lima thinks, then why is our school department having lockdown drills? They're doing it to keep kids safe, because this is a very real threat in every single American town, every city, no matter where you live. No one is immune to this kind of thing. And it is a number one concern with parents and children. We even had, I believe, on the beach, a mass shooting drill this past spring or summer. I mean, our police think this is a concern. So I think by honoring people who have been associated with the gun violence that is rampant in this country, and has, I'm sad to say, has the potential to happen at any time, any place, we should honor people. And that's kind of what it is. But my reaction is to concern for taxes. Well, I'm concerned for people and the quality of life of people. And I find it sad that all of my grandchildren, living all different parts of the country, they feel this tension. They have the lockdown drills. And how sad it is that this is what our kids are faced with. So I think it helps people who have survived this, with a relative, with a neighbor, with a friend, to know that we are aware as a country, and we feel badly for them, and we want to express sympathy for their loss or their disability.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Jaski?
I wanted to speak also with the topic of guns. I don't know what this resolution does. Brings up guns. And my wife was in the house, and there was three people who broke in. She's in bed. She's in bed, she hears three people out there. I fought with her many times that she could carry a weapon, concealed weapon, to self, to protect herself, and she would not listen. Three people entered the house, in Narragansett. Luckily, she had a cell phone, called, called the police, and state police got out there fast enough to chase these people, get them. Possession of a gun is, many times, so valuable, it saves lives. I understand suicides. You can jump off a bridge out there. Suicide, we have a gun, we'll jump off a bridge. Lack of a gun is not going to stop a suicide. I don't think so. Maybe some kind of education, I don't know. All I know is the value of the gun cannot dimin, can't be diminished. It is necessary to save your life. Yes, at times negatives can happen on anything, even your car. You can kill with your car. Russ's single-outlet gun has the problem. And to make me think that guns are so terrible, when my wife almost died because she didn't have a gun, and today still won't get one. And yes, you want to honor the people that have been hurt in any fashion, and try to prevent that from happening. But to put such a negative light on the value that could save your life, your mother's life, and someone's, I think is wrong. Therefore, we should just stay away from this discussion and let the police and those, the gun training groups, we have that gun thing up there in Peasdale, they're training people how to use gun appropriately. Let's, let's learn, teach our children, teach everyone how to use it appropriately. They're not in the Army for me. They taught me to use a gun, and it demanded that I be mentally willing to kill somebody with this gun. It was a very stressful situation that I was going to have to. And I, I went to the major, and I said, I've got to kill this person over there. Yes, even if he's not shooting you, you must kill him first, because that's the military, he's the enemy. If you don't kill him first, he will kill you. This is the attitude out there. I'm glad you bring it back. But in different situations, there is different attitudes and different responsibilities, different training required. Must focus on that, and not in just demonizing this thing called a gun.
Thank you, Mr. Robert Jaski. Yes, sir?
I just want to thank you for bringing this up. I think a motion like this, which causes discussion, is worth it. This is democracy in action. I go with, let's, let's run with something like this, that if I read it correctly, it's just recognizing survivors. It's not making a judgment call on the use of guns, whether you should have a gun or not. And whether it passes or not, I, I think there's a value in bringing it up. Because it is a national issue, and you make the point that it's a national issue, why should we do it locally? But I think it causes us all to get more involved locally, it's done its job, so thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? I just want to add a couple thoughts to this as well. I spoke to Jesse briefly before this. I think it's a great idea to put this on a motion. It definitely is a great discussion point today. We have people in this town, there's a family in this town whose grandchildren were at Sandy Hook that terrible day. So gun violence certainly is, is a national issue and a Narragansett issue. And I, I do believe, and let Rick scream for this out, but I believe that's what it's getting to. It's an issue all around. As a matter of fact, Rick is leading the charge, I think, among the council, to try to have another police officer put at the elementary schools, we'll have officers at every school, wanting to make sure our children feel safe at school. But as the gentleman just mentioned, I believe this is a national issue. It certainly is a great opportunity for us to think about it today, but we made a conscious decision on the council last term not to have any additional national days, assertion put on for proclamation. And I think that's a good idea. I think that certainly Narragansett has, has this issue that we need to resolve, but it's, it's nothing that I'd like to see as far as, as written in motion. But thank Jesse for bringing it to the town and touching, this is a great discussion today. Any further discussion with council?
Yeah, just have a couple quick last thoughts on it. Just want to reiterate that this is definitely not about gun control. In fact, there's a line in here that says, "To encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe." So it's very intentional that gun control is not mentioned, or anything even worded to allude to gun control. It really is about remembering and acknowledging and supporting victims of gun violence and survivors. And I also want to apologize for kind of speaking about, you know, Narragansett not being affected. You know, I think I was thinking more relatively compared to other cities and towns. However, I completely understand what Melissa and Barbara were mentioning, and, you know, I'm aware of instances over the last decade in Narragansett with, you know, deaths from guns. So my intent was definitely not to minimize any of those events. And in terms of it being a national thing, so my, so I have a relative on my wife's side, who's a younger man, who, because of something extremely stupid he did with a gun, is now in jail for the rest of his life, and his son doesn't have a mother. So that happened in California. We live in Rhode Island, so I don't really, you know, I don't know how this is a national issue when it affects all of us directly in every town. So I don't, you know, that, I don't really get that point. But, yeah, so I'm glad we're discussing it at least, so we'll see how the move goes. Appreciate it.
Anyone else with counsel?
Well, again, I can support, supporting, it's a wiretap, gun violence. I can't, I cannot support this resolution as it is. I don't know.
All right, well, we'll see how the move goes.
As, just as a leader of moms, I, I actually...
Could you please come to the podium and speak, so we can hear you at home?
As a leader with moms, I absolutely support your thoughts on that, and I have the authority to say, yeah, that's good. It's just to honor people, it really is, and just to bring awareness of, you know, our condition in America, and...
Right, well, I'm not going to approve something that law enforcement with suicides, gun homicides, domestic violence, and gun violence, I mean, with the...
I think you take the police out of it.
I'm making amendment to remove shootings by law enforcement from the resolution.
Second?
And we'll do this full motion after. Can we do that, um?
Is that, that amendment was already on the floor? Okay. Wait a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's just for the amendment, so for the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. No, I'm sorry. Motion fails 2-2. The last motion for the evening is a motion to approve the draft response written by the town manager and to send it to Rite Aid. Is there a motion?
So we'll do second.
Discussion?
So I put this motion on as a follow-up to our meeting two weeks ago. The attachment is a letter written by the town manager, Jim Tierney, with a couple updates based on our discussion from the last meeting. You know, based on the way that things went in the last meeting, it sounded like we were pretty much in consensus or in agreement on asking the state for the funding to use, really, a more flexible way for permitting, design, and planning to do a more full bike path that goes all the way to the town beach. So this would be the official response from the town to the state, and it is attached. And we're literally just voting to approve that and to have it sent to the, to the state and then take it from there.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so, I mean, I agreed to allow the funding for this bike path to be considered as long as, again, it was going to go through the Kanachit Farm. I'm not going to approve going along the back of the ballpark, or spray the playground, the Indian, and then have a parking area with bike racks, and then people funnel from there to the beach, however. If they think that they can get it through Kanachit Farm, and get down to the beach at some point, fine. It's not going to happen overnight. I think this white path has been going on for over 20 years. They knew from day one, the toughest destination was from where it is now, to get to the beach, because there was no way of doing it without either going through Kanachit Farm, or going through a neighborhood. And as I said before, there's nine houses on School Street. They didn't want it to go down School Street. I can't see where you're going to try to get it to go down Wanda or Off Palm. There's 20 some houses there, and people don't want their road rerouted, onways, sidewalks, bike lanes, any of that to change their neighborhood. So I'm on board if they want to go through Kanachit Farm. If they come back and they say, we're going to do a plan to go behind the park and then dump out by the Indian, I'm not... I'm not gonna be in favor of that at all.
Jim, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Not really. The letter's self-explanatory. The original one, everyone looked at before. I made a few minor adjustments after the last, last council meeting.
Perfect. Anyone from the audience? Do you want to speak, or Heather?
It, it just would be helpful if we sought the draft so we knew what we were talking about.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Bob Attala. I chair the Friends of the South County Bike Path. And we appreciate the leadership of your recommendation to have the town manager go to the state to see if you can proceed through Kanachit Farm. I'm sure you're probably aware of some of the other very positive events that are taking, that have started or taken place on the bike path. The connection from URI is now complete on the bike path. It goes from 138 at the university. It can be reached quickly by ministerial road, just a little bit south of Ministerial Road. You'll see where the connection comes in. Also, the, the town of South Kingston is now in the process of connecting the South County Commons to the state, to the town's recreation department building. And if you go out to, it's in construction at this particular time. If you go to the Commons, you can go to the edge of where it starts. And you can see there's a very sophisticated switchback that has been established to accommodate the grade change going from the Commons down onto this path. So again, there's, across the country, it's realized more and more attention is being placed to bicycles as well as pedestrian access. Again, we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Ojuski.
I think, Councilman Levy, you've got, you've got kind of on the right path, if you will. If you look at Nullman, the, they have a wooden, a large wooden bridge that goes over this swampy area. And it's worse. So it just seems so logical that we could find enough wooden bridges to take the bicycle across Kanachit. And no matter how big it's gotta be, maybe there'll be some wood supplier that eventually might give us the wood for a sign or something. And we could build a bridge long enough to span those areas that we have to. So we oughta just really set our sights on going through that Kanachit area that's not being utilized for anything with the animals right now. And I don't think they'll be hurt that much by having a wooden structure going over the bike path. Just seems a logical idea that we oughta hopefully focus on that rather than congestive spots in the center of town. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Morgan?
Catherine Selber, 48, Rose Creek. This is a substantial reduction in funds. We went from 8.43 million to $3 million. Now, the $3 million they gave us, they want us to construct the path. They don't want more studies and advisory opinions and all of that other stuff. The other thing is this, have other cities and towns been cut like this for their bike paths? Well, you know, and I understand, 2019, I read it, they want to divert the money to fix bridges and all this other stuff. But we need a bike path to the beach. This seems to me would be a priority, not just for our town, but really statewide bike riders. I don't know why. We just don't sue the downtown state and ask for the rest of the money. You know, maybe, maybe they shouldn't be diverting the money to whatever. Or maybe some of the money they're diverting could be diverted back to us. We're kind of like, just like, going over playing dead here and hoping that our reps can squeeze some more money out. Maybe we'll go a little further. Forget it. Just sue them. That's what I, sue them for the money that they promised us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rosemary Smith, 24 Caston Road. I would encourage the town manager and the town council to send the response to Rida, to the Rida letter of May 2019, saying that we want to convene, continue the conversation about what the town in Naraganset envisions for the bike path. In the last few weeks, the town residents have clearly said they want the bike path to go to the beach. It needs to be off-road. And we have learned that we have the backing of our terrific state representatives, Tansey and Mackenzie, to help us get through this difficult funding process. I have the opportunity today to look over a document that had been sent to the town on November 27, 2018. It was a memorandum from VHB, which is a consulting firm, which was hired by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation to write a project readiness review. It's clear that the only element that was considered with this permability was the permability of the project. The ability to get permits to do the construction there. What was left out were two other important criteria. The safety of the path users and the overall aesthetics. So town residents have declared that on-street is not safe on our narrow, well-traveled streets. And we all agree that the ambiance of a bike path through Kanachit Farm is far superior to riding next to vehicles on town roads. There was an additional criteria from the readiness report which talks about construction costs. Our state reps have promised to help find funding to complete the path to the beach. This is a project where council members, town staff, town residents and state representatives are working toward a common goal, which is pretty hard to find right now in our country. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Shadowitz?
I hate to waste the money on another traffic study. I know there have been traffic studies on 1A in middle of winter when the conditions of traffic are very different than they are in the summer or on holiday. I'm talking about the construction of some of the stores that went up there. I'd rather have the money spent on improving the environmental opportunities for children and families in Naraganset. Because many of the wooded areas are disappearing due to construction. I mean, we moved here, there used to be a dirt road with a rope at the end of it or a chain going up to Kanachit Farms. And none of those houses were there. And I noticed how it's, people get all these variations based on water, um, water issues when they hire a lawyer and bring a lawyer in to get these variations. And I wonder whether it's really been explored to the fullest extent, whether we can get permits through Kanachit Farms. I'm worried that that's a political issue. And I'd like to see that more explored so that children and families in town can enjoy, enjoy the Kanachit Farm area. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
I certainly didn't come for this, but when my children grow, my son went to school with Jesse, there weren't things for these kids to do in town. There's nothing for these kids to do in town. I'm disabled and I started riding the bike. My husband begs me not to ride in Naraganset. I ride from Naraganset to South Kingston. It's dangerous. My daughter is looking to possibly move back in town. And I've told her not to because there's nothing in town. What are you, what are the kids gonna do here in town? I've suggested South Kingston, I've suggested Charlestown, Jamestown, but I don't suggest Naraganset. I think that you need to address that. And I think by God, bike path is a simple little thing. I'd like to see it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further discussion from the council?
I just wanted to say real quick, Richard and Jim, that it'd be helpful if there was something on the screen. And then I realized that the attached letter is not in the packet in the room tonight. You know, you'd have to get it off the website. So I'll just take a second just to read, just the three bullet points from the letter that I think sum up the point of the letter. So the following bullet points represent the town's position. One, reiterate that either Alternatives 1, 2 and 3A would be the town's preferred route. So those three routes are through Kanachit Farms. Number two, emphasize that the town does not and will not endorse an on-road option with the modifications that were discussed. And then three, request that Rida authorize flexibility to spend some or all of the $3 million for advanced design and/or permitting of the town's preferred alternatives. So that, that's basically the ask in the letter. There's more wording than that, but I think that sums it up for the most part. So sorry that there's nothing on the screen for you.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes at 0:0. Okay, we're moving on to the open forum. If you could please conduct yourself in a orderly manner, respectful manner. I've asked our town sergeant to move to the front of the room. And tonight, he will be signaling to the people at the podium when we reach 2 minutes and 45 seconds. So they'll have, they'll have 15 seconds to sum up their thoughts. And then again, in 3 minutes, he will let them know that their time is up. Is there anyone here wishing to speak?
My name is Jean Nardone and I live on 31 Holbert Avenue in Naraganset, in Briggs Farm. And I'd like to thank the council for passing the temporary moratorium on building. I'm just sorry that we didn't do it before the two, five bedroom homes that are currently being built in our neighborhood. And I guess I just want to encourage you to think about what it means to live in a residential neighborhood. Briggs Farm is a very compact neighborhood. And the new homes that are being built are what we like to call URI dormitories. And I just would like you to think about whether the town has reached a tipping point where we are no longer family-friendly. It seems to me that young families can no longer afford to live in town. I guess we're lucky because we have the beach. College students bring a lot of revenue to the town. And I appreciate that. Sometimes in college towns, real estate loses its value, not for us. Value, values in our homes are amazing because of our, I guess, rental potential. So just, my plea is to please consider how Naraganset can take care of the needs of residents as well as rental community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Gentlemen in the back?
Good evening. My name is Tom Calhoun. I live at 26 Baltimore Avenue. In the overall scheme of the things you're discussing tonight, whether it be climate change and sea level rise and beaches and moratoriums on dormitory-style housing or gun, raising the awareness of victims of gun violence. Issue I'm interested in tonight is relatively mine, but it's important to me and I'm asking for your help. I've been trying for about 60 days now, a little longer than that, to get an answer to what I think is a relatively straightforward, and a question from town staff. And that is whether the planning board, what it sits in, is raising judicial function to review applications that come before it, is bound by any rules with respect to conversations that take place with board members outside an official meeting. Reason I raise that, and it's essentially referred to in the trade, is ex parte conversations. Reason I raise it is because it goes to the heart of fairness in terms of how applications are considered. If there are parties that are having ex parte conversations outside of an official meeting on an application, and there are provisions either by law or statute or ordinance or procedure that's adopted by the planning board or by best practice, that are well-known and should be available to people in terms of understanding what the rules of engagement are. If there are no rules, that's fine. So that everyone plays by the same rules. It's what's important here. The specific incident that kind of triggered this was I've been following an application for about two years now. It is in front of the planning, it continues to be in front of the planning board. It's an application with respect to a master plan for residential development off of Clock Road. In the course of a recess in a meeting that took place in March, excuse me, a meeting that took place in October, I was approached, a member of the planning board, who indicated that he could be, the quote was, "I could be lobbying on this application." I did not take that to be inappropriate in terms of looking for financial remuneration or anything of that nature. Simply that I could be lobbying on this, I said to him, "Wait, I think under provisions against ex parte conversations with respect to the board in conducting this application, sit in hope with your heart." It caused me to report to town staff, initially through the Planning Committee of the Northern Department, ultimately out through Jim and the town solicitor. In two or three correspondence that I had with Jim, the advice that has come from the town solicitor is meant to go to the State Ethics Commission. It's not the appropriate venue. It's not, it's not in, it's being communicated here. Not that it was, a board member was looking to be inappropriately benefited financially. I'll summarize. Thank you. So what I'm asking you for your help is essentially, it's a very straightforward question. Can you get me an answer to the question in the next seven days? In terms of what rules the planning board follows with respect to our ex parte conversations on active applications. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Again, I can't help finishing off about debt money. If you want families, let's keep their taxes down where they belong or keep them low. That should help families. The State, State Treasurer Magazine has made some calculations. It says we cannot afford a bomb. We can't afford a library bomb. That's what he said. That was professional calculations finance. So I thought about how can I help? Let's help the library, try to make some decisions. And I just come up with two suggestions quickly. One, I guess we could just spend a billion dollars to fix up the existing building. And that would be our quiet space library. Nice quiet space, go in there, you study, computers, whatever. That's a quiet space. Take another $2 million, spend it on a library annex located at the community center. So now we have maybe an addition to the community center so that we can use the community center as well as this addition for the events. We have after parking, we have the school property, we can use the gym for a lodge situation, movies, the whole thing without bothering the quiet space. So it just seems an annex, a library annex at the, at the community center is the answer. Now we're just spending maybe $3 million, rather than $5, $6, $7 million, whatever it is. We oughta look for alternatives, unless of course, the library, who has some good... We oughta look for alternatives, unless, of course, the library, who is so good at it, can raise enough money for fundraising. If they, whatever they can raise in fundraising, fine. But the tax pocket is not available according to the professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steve Nolan, do I have motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.